This is, welcome to the 10th special meeting of the Lynn School Committee Thursday, Thursday, August 27, 2020. This is Mayor Tom McGee, and I'd like to say good evening and thank you for joining us. This open meeting of, this open meeting of the Lynn School Committee is being conducted remotely consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March 12, 2020. Due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth and the, and the city due to the outbreak of the COVID-19 virus. In order to mitigate the transmission of COVID-19 virus, we've been advised and directed by the Commonwealth to suspend public gatherings and as such, the governor's order suspends the requirement of the open meeting law of all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location. Further, all members of public bodies are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. The order which you can find posted with agenda materials for this meeting is on the city website allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely so long as reasonable public access is afforded so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless such participation is required by law. This meeting will not feature public comment. For this meeting, the Lynn School Department is convened by telephone conference via, video conference via the Zoom platform and a MediaCast livestream as posted on the city and school website. In addition, the meeting can be viewed on Comcast channels 3 and 22 and Verizon channels 37 and 38. Please note that this meeting is being recorded and that some attendees are participating by video conference. Accordingly, be aware that other people may be able to see you and take care not to screen share your computer. Anything that you broadcast may be captured by the recording. Before we get into the first items on the agenda, permit me to cover some ground rules for effective and clear conduct of our business and to ensure accurate, accurate meeting minutes. As chairman, I will introduce each speaker on the agenda. After they conclude their remarks, I will go down the line of members inviting each by name to provide any comment, question, or motions. Please until, hold until your name is called. Please remember to mute your phone and computer when you are not speaking. Please remember to speak clearly in a way that helps generate accurate minutes. For any response, please wait until the chair leads, yields the floor to you and start taking your name before speaking. If members wish to engage in discussion with other members, please do so through the chair. Again, taking care to identify yourselves. Finally, each vote taken in this meeting will be conducted by a roll call. And I just want to be clear for those that are listening or have not been able to connect on Zoom that this is what being broadcast live on LCTV. Again, the stations that I've listed. Or you can get on the website, the LCT, the LCTV website, and it's being livestreamed as well. So this is available through a number of different media outlets to ensure that this is if Zoom, the Zoom is filled, but we have definitely access through those other means to ensure that people can watch the meeting and follow the meeting along. Before we get started on the orders of business, I would like to ask Nan to do a roll call of the members and of those from the administration and that are part of our weekly, of our, a part of our meetings to also take a roll call on those as well. So Nan, if you'd be, I would like to get started on that, please.
Mr. Cassianas?
Present.
Ms. Capora?
Present.
Mr. Ford?
Present.
Ms. Gayley?
Present.
Mr. Nicholson?
Present.
Senator White?
Present.
Mayor McGee?
Present.
And observing, Dr. Joe Aronoff?
Present.
And Dan Mazzaro?
Present.
What did I forget? My mind just went by Kevin McKeer?
Present.
Kimberly Powers, present.
Thank you.
John Mayos?
Thank you, Don. Okay.
Okay, great, thank you. First, a lot of business I'd like, and I know there is a flag that is being displayed. Don has a flag displayed in the committee room, so we ask everyone to stand and join us in the salute to the United States, to the flag of the United States of America. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Now, I ask that you stand for a moment, and we will have a moment of silence for Edwin Perez Osorio, an English high school student, and Brenda Ann Beal, our member, Michael Sadoway's mother, who we offer our condolences as well, and I would ask for a moment of silence in memory of both of those. First on the agenda is minutes. We have a, a number of minutes that are listed, looking for a motion.
Make a motion that we accept the 7th special meeting on July 27, 2020.
A motion, is there a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Cassianas?
Yes.
Ms. Capora?
Yes.
Mr. Ford?
Yes.
Ms. Gayley? Ms. Gayley?
Yes.
Mr. Nicholson?
Yes.
Mr. Sadoway?
Yes.
Mayor McGee?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the minutes of the Personnel Subcommittee meeting on August 5, 2020.
Second.
Roll call required. It's been on motion, second.
Mr. Cassianas?
Yes.
Ms. Capora?
Yes.
Ms. Ford?
Yes.
Ms. Gayley?
Yes.
Mr. Nicholson?
Yes.
Mr. Sadoway?
Yes.
Mayor McGee?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the minutes of the 8th special meeting on August 5, 2020.
Second.
There's a, a motion made in second, roll call required.
Mr. Cassianas?
Yes.
Ms. Capora?
Yes.
Mr. Ford?
Yes.
Ms. Gayley?
Yes.
Mr. Nicholson?
Yes.
Mr. Sadoway?
Yes.
Mayor McGee?
Yes. Next up, it is not on the agenda, and I'll ask John if we need a roll call to do this, but Sheila O'Neill is asked to get a chance to make a statement to the committee as we go into our deliberations on a number of things tonight, which I am, will, am, will offer to do that. So I don't know, John, if I have to.
Motion to suspend the rules, Mr. Mayor.
Motion, a motion to suspend the rules to allow Sheila O'Neill to address the committee. Is there a, is there a second?
Second.
Requires a roll call?
Is that Sheila?
Sheila O'Neill.
O'Neill. All right. Mr. Cassianas?
Yes.
Ms. Capora?
Yes.
Mr. Ford?
Yes.
Ms. Gayley?
Yes.
Mr. Nicholson?
Yes.
Mr. Sadoway?
Yes.
Mayor McGee?
Yes. So with that, I know Sheila is on the Zoom if she can be. I see her, Sheila. I see her, Sheila, okay.
Good evening, Sheila O'Neill, 200 Locust Street, and President of the Lynn Teachers Union. In light of the report regarding airflow issues that was out from the State House yesterday and the fact that Lynn is the epicenter of the pandemic currently in Massachusetts, I am asking the district to reconsider in-person professional development on Monday, 8:31 and Tuesday, 9:01. As per memorandum of agreement for the calendar signed on August 5, the in-person professional development was agreed upon provided the following. Safety measures are negotiated and agreed, which we have requested a report of air quality and building safety from an outside agency, as well as the COVID-19 data remaining at a consistent or better than current levels. At that time, there were nine new cases in Lynn, and today we had 15 new cases in Lynn. And our weekly average yesterday was 6.08%. In March, we closed with a 5% rating. Clearly, our city is not prepared to have 100% plus educators in any building at this time. If Manning Field, an open arena, is closed, how can we send members of our workforce into buildings with poor air quality and ventilation? I am requesting that no teacher, paraprofessional, or therapist be mandated to enter a building until we have received the air quality report from training and the COVID-19 levels have reduced to yellow rating. I have no written evidence that our buildings are safe for our members. It does not make sense to send a full body of staff into buildings for professional development being presented virtually. Also, someone could video the tour through each building and present to staff in a Zoom meeting. There is no logical reason to demand educators be in the building on August 31 and September 1. The September 14 and September 15 in-person professional development should be decided based on the data closer to that time. Safety first. Our lives are vital. Respectfully, the Lynn Teachers Union. Thank you.
Thank you, Sheila. Thank you, Sheila, and with that, we're on to our next agenda items. Those are appointment and elections. Dr. Tutwiler, would you like to speak to that?
Glad to. We have three people that we're welcoming, one person we're welcoming new to the district and two others that we're welcoming to different positions. The first, who was not on the Zoom but did send an email, is Andrea Tadio, who is replacing Michelle Winslow as the program specialist at Drew, Drewett's Elementary. By way of quick reminder, Michelle Winslow is now the Assistant Director for Reading and English Language Arts in the Curriculum Office. A name that should ring familiar, first from the standpoint of excellence in instruction, but also Skills USA, Claire Price, has been appointed the Special Education Department Head at Lynn Tech. And then finally, Bobby Serino, who's done an excellent job as a tech, has been appointed the PC Land Manager. I want to wish all three well in their, in their new roles, and we're excited to work with them going forward.
Great, well, thank you for that, and we welcome them aboard and wish them the best as they move forward down with their work every day for the students of the City of Lynn. Next on the agenda is presentation, and it's an opportunity on, Dr. Tutwiler, update on the reopening. Would you, are you ready to present?
I am.
Great, thank you.
Share my screen here. Can I just see a nod if you can see that? Yes, okay, great. So the last time we met, August 5, which is only a little more than two weeks ago, a lot has happened since then, both in the realm of, you know, regulation and guidance and our planning and work here in the district. And I just wanted to give a brief overview of some of the things that we have accomplished and some of the things that we've done and some of the things that we're preparing to do and the time that we have left before the launch. Just by way of reminder, if I can get my screen, there we go. When we met last on the 5th, I proposed a launch to the school year of remote learning for most students and then in-person services for students in our special education self-contained classes. I think we all know that about a week later, a metric was released that indicated Lynn to be in the red category, which means that they strongly encourage, not mandate, that we engage in remote instruction. But given that Lynn was at the time about three times higher than the threshold for being a community that's in the red, we really felt like the safest approach to instruction was to provide that for all students in remote fashion. And so since then, we've really been intentional and adamant, frankly, about bringing the community in, communicating, providing information, communicating in a way that's two-way, allowing our colleagues and families to ask questions. We've done that through now seven virtual town halls. We provide plenty of written information, but we really feel like the opportunity for folks to interact with us and ask questions has been really important. We've also been working really closely with what I would call our partner agencies to make sure that the efforts are aligned. We're all mission-driven with respect to serving students and families well, but we're really making an effort to lean on one another, to provide supports for students as they engage in a brand-new school year in a way that they, that they never have before. There's a lot on this slide, but it's just a snapshot or a snip of our reopening safely environment. It's just beneath my ugly mug on the district's homepage. In it, there's, there's a wealth of information for families, and we've tried to, you know, organize it in a way that's accessible, not overwhelming. This is the communications page where you can see all of the recent written communications available for families and also if they weren't able to join us for a town hall and would like to watch, they're, they're welcome to. You can see at the top of, of the snip, there's several tabs which will bring families to specific information, whether it's our frequently asked questions page, if they're interested in the calendar, when school's starting, one of the breaks, or if they have an interest in reading the reopening plan, which has schedules and information around health and safety and essentially how we're attempting to educate their, their students this year. All of that is available for families in this space. We've been working really, really hard to create a learning scenario for staff that will help us open in as smooth a fashion as possible. By way of reminder, the commissioner shortened the school year by 10 days, excuse, yeah, by 10 days, and those 10 days will be, to be dedicated to professional development, all of which should happen before the first day of instruction. I've talked about this before, I talked a little bit about it when we were together on the 5th, but here you can just get a sense, this is the first week of some of the kinds, some of the things that'll be going on in professional development, a really heavy focus on acquaintance staff with Schoology, our learning management system, certainly helping safety, big emphasis on trauma-informed practice. That's actually going to be a consistent theme at faculty meetings throughout the year, but there's a foundational approach right there in the beginning, in the first week. And in the second week, you know, sort of a similar theme around practice with Schoology, we were really intentional about providing time for staff to, once they've sort of gotten into the environment and sort of learned how to work it, then creating content, you know, creating units, really getting familiar and, and building substantive learning experiences for kids. You'll also notice that ELE stands for English Learner Education. This is year three with a district-wide focus on professional development in that realm, and we are going to continue with that. This year, in addition to strategy, there's also a heavy emphasis on equity, race and equity. And there's another piece of that professional development I'll speak to in the superintendent's report related to the resolution that the school committee adopted in June. But this gives you a sense at a high level, and this is the overview view of professional development, but it gives you a sense for what we've planned for beginning Monday, and we're excited to, to get going with staff. Just a brief update on technology. As of today, we've distributed about 10,000 devices. You know, we're, we're just over 16,000 students. Recall that we have devices for students in grades 3 through 12, and students in kindergarten, first grade and second grade, total in terms of the, their enrollment, about 4,000 students. So we're really about 2,000 students shy of every student for whom we have a device at this point having one, which I think is pretty impressive. At this point, there's going to be a really big push over the next two weeks to get the remaining 2,000 students in in grades 3 through 12 to get a device. On the next bullet point, you can see that we've actually, were awarded a grant to help us purchase devices for students in K to 2. We've known about this for a while, but it's, it was embargoed, so we already put that order in, and we're hopeful that we, we get those devices as soon as possible and get them in the hands of what I call our littles. And there's also some additional funds for tech-related supplies, things like sleeves, protective covers, things of that nature. It's not new news that we had a partnership with Comcast to provide in-home internet access for families who do not have it. The company has been really amazing. Previously, if a family had any sort of negative experience, an outstanding balance, or something of that nature, with Comcast, they would not provide that in-home resource for them. They since waived that feature, so now any family, regardless of their history, if they do not have internet in the home, that it will be provided and the bill will be sent to the Lynn Public Schools to the tune of $10 a month per family or per household. They've also committed to us that any family, there are not many homes that don't have the infrastructure for setting up or turning on Wi-Fi in the home, but any home that does not, for whatever reason, the company's committed to installing whatever is needed so that that family can access internet. So thumbs up to Comcast.
And then finally, Dr. Tutwiler, can I just speak to that briefly?
Please.
Because I go, I, I know we talked, and I had gotten a correspondence from someone who was having difficulty in their home with some, some number of students, directed it to you, and, and I just wanted to be clear for the members and others that are hearing that, that's such an important point for the, the internet access. So I know that you were working on that with the specific request, but I think it's important for people to know if they, that they can absolutely reach out and, and you will be working with them to ensure that everybody has access from the internet. So I just think that's an important point to, to reiterate.
Thank you, Mayor. Come and pick up the device, this resource is explained to them. And we'll be doing some additional outreach, you know, in the days leading up to the school year, to really want to make sure from the standpoint of equity that everyone has access. Video tutorials, I, I did a, a strike through on that. I mean, we're, we're still planning to do a number of video tutorials on the realms of Schoology, but just today we posted a video tutorial. Kudos to, oh geez, now her name escapes me, Lynn.
Afton Dean.
Thank you, Afton Dean, for creating an awesome, awesome tutorial on how kids go from, you know, unboxing the device to getting it hooked up to wireless, and that's available for families, both in English and Spanish. Good stuff there. In terms of meals, if you recall from the very beginning, we talked about like the pillars for reopening, you know, addressing the hierarchy of need was number one on our list, meaning addressing needs around food security, housing stability, mental and physical health, I mean, that's first. And so we've, you know, since March, we've been doing the grab-and-go opportunity for families, that continues to this day. But when the school year starts, we have to play by a slightly different set of rules. And so our plan is to start the first three days. A lot, you know, students would go to whatever their district school is or wherever they, they go to school, or the closest school to their home, and they can retrieve a meal that'll have breakfast and lunch in it for that day. We're going to do it that way for the first three days, just to kind of get a sense for, you know, where the foot traffic is, you know, how many families are showing up. And then from there, we're planning to do a process where twice a week, families would come and, and get meals for the days intervening. We think that would be more convenient for families, not having to come to the school every day to retrieve a meal. But in these boxes will be enough lunch, enough breakfast and snack to sustain the students until the next day they come and grab another box. And we're, we're envisioning Monday and Wednesday as being those days. This is probably one of those things, having never done it before, that we're gonna, you know, there's going to be a little bit of trial and error to kind of see, you know, what works best for families in terms of getting the meals to them, but this sort of represents our initial thinking. And I know that in years past, there's been a lot of conversation about the meals and the quality of the meals. All of these meals will be fresh, never frozen. I had an opportunity to sample them and, you know, folks can look at me and tell that, you know, I'm not too picky around food, but I will say it was really good stuff. So we're excited that we're, we're able to offer this, but just know going into the year, we may want to shift a little bit to come up with a rhythm that works well for kids and for families. In the presentation on August 5, I talked a little bit about the Remote Learning Academy. We're getting a little bit closer to getting this stood up, so to speak. This is, you know, we, we always have the potential for returning to in-person learning at some point in the year. Again, we're remote learning for all students until November 20, and we'll reassess at that point. But for families who have a child who's medically fragile or simply, you know, for whatever reason, are not interested in in-person learning at all for the year, we wanted there to be an option for them. We're very close to finalizing this. There was a survey that went out last week to families that ends tomorrow to sort of gauge in a non-binding way, families who are interested in this option. Right now, we're at about 230 families who, who have expressed interest, and so our plan is to finalize with the third-party vendor, who thus far has some really impressive attributes, provide families with an info session so that they can make an informed decision, an informed decision on whether or not this is the best fit for them, and then, and then launch from there. And then finally, I believe this is the last slide. Lot of talk about high school athletics. There's a lot of language on this slide, I'll, I'll just give you a quick overview. The Department of Elementary and Secondary Education and the Mass Interscholastic Athletic Association have come up with a joint guidance on athletics that essentially says that any community or high school that's in a community that is deemed in the red cat, red category and is opening the school year in remote learning has to postpone their fall season. You'll notice the bullets below the overview give you a sense for each of the potential seasons. The, the, the guidance calls for us to postpone. The 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 guidance calls for us to postpone in Lynn our fall season till at least the, what they're calling the floating season, a float season. It's the bold season down down below. I I could say right now that there's interest among the Northeast Conference schools to postpone all fall athletics until that floating season, all of the schools doing that. There was a principal and athletic director vote to do so earlier this week, and there's another vote that needs to take place in order for that to be the case. So there is still the possibility for the kids to attend English and Classical to have the fall sports that are permissible, but during that floating season. We're we're working on a different pathway for Texas, they don't belong to that conference. But that's where we are right now as it relates to athletics. For the winter sports, that's sort of a wait-and-see kind of scenario. It's going to be based in large part on, you know, where the state is in terms of health and safety as to whether or not basketball or the contact sports can be played. So we'll we'll stay in touch with with families about that as it happens. But right now, we feel optimistic about some fall sports happening in the float season for students at English and Classical, we're working on something for that. That is not all, we have a little bit more. So some of the things that we're we're still working on and and plan to to get out in short order. We want to create a scenario or or a document for families that sort of helps them get set up for success in their homes, for students learning at home. At this point, I could say, you know, I've received probably a dozen emails from families asking for some advice around that, so we're preparing a guidance document to to help families in that way. Video tutorials, more of those in the realm, as I mentioned earlier, of navigating Schoology, which I've had an opportunity myself to to spend some time in it. It is a very, very accessible platform. So we're hopeful that we we'll be achieving success with it. But nonetheless, we want to make sure that families have an opportunity to to learn about and have some extra help at their fingertips in terms of in the way of video tutorials. I already spoke about the devices for K to two, all those have been ordered. And then finally, you know, in the town halls, families, and then emails directly to me, and in a couple of cases, some phone calls directly to me, families have expressed the real challenge around balancing work and young children who will be learning in remote fashion, and I I understand that completely. We're working on a plan that's still in beta format, but in partnership with some of the our partner agencies in the city to help them expand their plan in terms of adding more students to their daytime programs. So a little bit early to speak in details about that, but we're working as quickly as we can to get that in place and communicate with the families. Question?
Questions from members? Member Nicholson, and then Member Ford, and then Member Sadoway.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Dr. Tullwiler, for that presentation and to to you and your team and all the teachers who have been working hard to plan for the upcoming fall. I know how difficult this time is. Had a couple of sort of specific questions about reopening, but, you know, just want to check is, appreciate hearing from the Lynn Teachers Union President Sheila O'Neil, and obviously, this was a topic that was covered in your presentation. Is that, is this something you're going to cover now in terms of where that stands? Is something that we're going to do in executive session? What's the, what's the, what's the next step there?
You know, I would defer to the mayor, John, on that, but it's my understanding that it's that conversation will happen in an executive session first.
John? John Miles?
Can you hear me? I agree with the superintendent's properly in executive session.
Okay.
Okay.
You have another question? You have another question as well?
Yes, that's okay.
Yeah, for sure.
So my other question was around the the meal schedule. Can you talk a little bit more about the the sort of reasoning for reducing the frequency and sort of what the, any any risk there would be for people who miss the day? Any opportunities that would be for 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 people to get meals if they weren't available for that day for whatever reason? To make sure that we, like you said, are honoring that as a really top priority and and a huge risk of going remote for students to not have access to those to those daily meals?
Yeah, so I'll I'll kick it off and then I'll I'll turn it over to Kevin. The 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 quick answer is convenience for families. You know, we we, you know, and and that those first three days will be helpful for us in terms of understanding, you know, kind of what the what the patterns are and what the needs are and where the, you know, which schools are are seeing the most activity. But we wanted to craft a scenario that we thought was easy for families. Certainly, coming every day can be a challenge. And so we thought providing the boxes with the the multiple meals, multiple snacks seemed like a more convenient option. Kevin can speak to, you know, what happens if, you know, geez, we weren't, we weren't able to come on Monday or Wednesday. We certainly want to create a backup plan for for those families, but I'll let Kevin speak to that.
Kevin? Kevin Q?
Can you hear me?
Yep.
Yes.
Okay. Yes, as the superintendent said, I think we were trying to, we said this is like, we kind of introduced as a tentative plan. What we found is that families that, you know, have mentioned this on a daily basis that are coming, it's it's really, I think, more of a convenience factor for them. The contingency plan, I suppose, could be that we could have meals available on other days, but what we're trying to do is get the most amount of people to the building as as soon as possible. And by giving multiple meals out, the idea would be that people would gravitate to coming because we're finding on certain days, people just aren't coming. Or like when we give out the summer meals on Friday, it's our busiest day. So, you know, when they're getting multiple meals and they like that idea, so we were trying to use a platform to move forward in the school year. And if it needs to be adjusted, it'll be adjusted, but other agencies have done boxes as as well. And we thought that this would be, you know, where students are pretty much going to be online up until a certain time, you know, make it a little more convenient than having to run every single day from the time they get off the computer down to a school to grab a lunch. They could get the box and it would make it a little more, you know, a steady Mondays and Wednesdays. You know, and we would adjust it if there were holidays and things of that nature. But we would, it's a fluid plan. We're trying to get something going to see if it works, and if it doesn't, we'll adjust on the fly, too.
Got it. That's, that's really helpful. The, and and I mean, yeah, I think that's going to be important to leave that option open, but that sounds, that sounds great. My my last question was about the Schoology. You know, obviously, there's so much, there's so much to be nervous about, to be concerned about, about this upcoming year and everything that's happened. Hopefully, one of the things I'm hopeful for is that we will find some silver linings and 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 sort of rely on the resourcefulness and the creativity of our of our teachers, our educators to to do things differently, to make remote learning more closer to the the our our goal of giving every student the the learning they deserve. One of the things that I think has the potential about remote learning is that we're in, we're literally inside of our families' homes in ways we haven't been before. What do students learn from home? And maybe some opportunities around sort of encouraging collaboration with parents and 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 guardians and and communication with parents and guardians. One of the things I I was wondering if was possible and would love to see is as we are sort of confirming that every student has a laptop and every student has internet access at home, and every student is logging on and tracking that data and about attendance and and access, could we also track sort of family communication? You know, like, find out, like, in the first week, say, we we have confirmed that we have interacted with, we've gotten communication back from X percent of all the families in the district so that we know that hopefully that'll be hundred percent very early in the year and that we know that everybody is logged on and knows how to enter into a back and forth with us. And who, I imagine that would be through Schoology, but whatever the platform is that the 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 parent is is or the the family is using and 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 sort of use that data.
Yeah, that that is totally possible. You know, I I can say this now, in the days of old with Jupiter, one of the wonderful features was its ability to capture students, you know, interactions within the platform, but also parent. And so that is absolutely something that we can capture. We are really being thoughtful about parent involvement, parent partnership in this process and understanding how key it is to the success of of this launch. But that, yeah, so the answer to your question is, yes, there is a way to capture that in a way that is quantitative and presentable.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Member Ford.
Just a quick question. On the August thirty first on the calendar, it said, "District Welcome", and that was on a professional development day. How extensive is that? How much, how many, how many would that involve?
How many people?
Yeah.
One. That's, that's a video that I made to welcome staff back. You can watch it, you're welcome to watch it.
Welcome to watch it.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So, you know, for the folks that attended the our welcoming last year at at City Hall, you know, during it, there was a video montage, just really awful, awesome. Like, it it really tugged at at our heart, our heartstrings and really showed what our community is is all about. And so another one has been made with an introduction by me. That's a bad district welcome.
Okay, thank you. Hope it's as good as last year's.
Great, thank you, Member Ford. Number Sadoway, then Number Gailey.
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I just have a couple of questions, Patrick. First one being, I'm happy that Comcast has stepped up and and really contributed greatly to to our city and to our most needy and vulnerable citizens. But you need electricity to have internet. Have we reached out to National Grid? Do we, do we have any idea if they're doing shut-offs or whatnot at this point? And how long would that hold be? Or and what we would do if if the students' electricity was shut off?
Yeah, that's a great question. That's a stone we've not yet turned. You know, part of me feels like the approach to that would be to partner with other superintendents, neighboring super, Chelsea, Revere, Salem, where similar challenges might exist and see if we can, you know, have a unified voice around the importance of this. But that's not something that we've yet addressed.
Okay.
Great, perfect. So I'll just quick speak to them. I think under the current eviction moratorium, it's my understanding, and I could be wrong, but I'm pretty sure that shut-offs and all of that are are part of that moratorium on housing. I think it's a great question as well. And then I think sharing with other communities once the moratorium runs its course. I do that, I know there are a couple of court cases actually addressing that. But I I think it's a great question and we'll work together on that.
Thank you. And I've asked a couple of times about the conditions of our buildings going back a few months, and I I just, I haven't received any any type of feedback besides that IS, ISD, you know, would be doing it and that there was a third party. So what you did provide to me, and I'm grateful for it, is I I requested information to City Hall and Lynn District Court as to what they're doing with their staff and general public and the condition of their buildings. So I was able to get that information and I appreciate it. But, you know, those buildings are old, some of them don't have AC, you know, and the staffing level varies between the two of them. But I'm worried about our buildings, so I just want to make sure that I I get that information back. Do you have a timeframe of when you'll be able to share that with us?
Yeah, so my understanding is that I will have some reports in hand in about thirty days.
Okay. And what do we do when we try to transition to hybrid on that sliding scale? And a large majority of teachers become exposed to COVID. If it, you know, if they're all in the same building and someone's exposed, what is the plan at that point? Do you, do we have a plan on substitute staffing? And what are the expectations of teachers that may be in quarantine with regards to their workload?
So I'll work backward. If someone has a, you know, doctor or medical professional-directed quarantine, there's real clear language in the guidance documents around who quarantines or the circumstances under which someone should. I mean, it's our expectation that, you know, folks have the tools. You you should continue to continue to work unless you are unwell, in which case, you know, it would be, you know, sick time, depending on the scenario. You know, those those scenarios where, which, you know, some would say are the inevitable, where there's, you know, spread in a particular school or, you know, in a particular community, like, what do you, what do you do? I think what you do is, you know, you you embrace safety first. You know, you 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 shut schools down, you you pivot to remote learning. Do we have, you know, this is a scenario if we were in hybrid or in any in-person services. Do we have the capacity to replace large numbers of teachers? No, and any district that tells you that they do wouldn't be telling you the truth. That's just not possible. So, you know, we're we're going to be asking staff to create, you know, just as they would in in any normal circumstance, you know, historically, you know, substitute work. It'll be largely asynchronous work for students to do, whether it's pre-recorded lessons or or the directing students in the direction of videos and assignments, reading. And then we do have some substitute capacity, but not, not enough to cover, you know, you know, a whole school where, you know, heaven forbid, something that catastrophic happened.
Thank you.
And Member Gailey? And then Member Castellanos and and then Member Capola. Member Gailey?
Dr. Tullwiler, I have a few questions. Over the last couple of weeks, I I got a lot of emails for the last meeting. But some of the questions, I don't know if they are relevant. Like, one woman sent me an email, a therapist, to provide teleservices from home. It's easier to do it from home than at the school for therapists, for special ed. Teleservices? Look into that, maybe that would be.
Certainly. I I mean, is this being, was that presented to you as the unit would prefer to do that from home or an individual?
Individual.
Okay.
Okay, and then I know that the computers have been ready for pickup for a while. So how many computers have been distributed right now? Like, how many people have come in and got their computers so they can be working with them and trying them out and seeing how to use them? And how many have been left? And how many have been left? Do we have any teachers still not getting their computers? The parents, when did they get their computers? So those are the questions.
Yeah.
I'll talk to you about, because everybody should have a computer as a teacher at this point, I believe, but I'm not sure.
The, the opportunity for our staff to retrieve a device has been there. We've got.
When did that start?
Say again?
When did it start that, that they were available for them to come and get them?
Someone would have to keep me honest, maybe a month ago. The weeks tend to run together for me.
There have been multiple dates and times for staff to pick up computers.
When did it start, Deb?
I want to say at least a month ago.
Okay.
Okay, so everyone right now should have a computer.
They should if they picked it up.
We've got about 430 staff who've not yet retrieved the device. We just invited paraprofessionals to pick up a device today. So it's, you know, they're gonna be coming in tomorrow, they can retrieve it on Monday. And that 430 does not include the paraprofessionals.
Okay, and then K through 2 will be receiving them sometime during the fall.
Right. So this is the part that's really hard. I mean, the minute we got the news about that grant award, you know, literally, we got the, Kevin can keep me honest here, we got the letter on a Saturday morning. That Monday, we ordered devices. You know, the challenge is everyone's ordering devices and supply lines are, have been interrupted because of all the factors related to COVID-19, so it's slower. You know, but, but, but we're, we're on top of it sometime this fall.
Okay, and then there's, looking at your slideshow, there was one little criteria, because I was wondering about sports.
Say that again?
I was wondering about golf, because they allow us to have golf, so why couldn't the golf teams play? It's because we're in a red district or?
True criteria. If your community is designated as red and you're starting the school year in remote fashion, then you have to postpone your fall season, all of the sports.
Okay, so, but I think it's gonna be awfully hard to play golf in February.
Could be. I'm praying for a warm winter, mild winter.
Yeah, well, I don't think we're going to.
Almanack doesn't, doesn't think we're gonna have that, but you never know.
Thank you very much.
I'm the Castellanos, then Member Capola.
Patrick, Dr. Tullow, thank you so much for, for your presentation. I want to really also thank Link Community Television for always, you know, streaming our communications constituents. It's, I know, first part of what I'm kind of pointing out is communication. You know, I appreciate the efforts being made. I know you had the virtual town halls, you had the tutorials, the website, but I can't emphasize how important it is to over-communicate what we're doing, what our, what our plan is, what the routine is gonna be, especially with us going into the red category. We have a lot of folks with anxiety, with, you know, there's a lot of health risks, a lot, there's a lot of, a lot of factors that are playing to not really processing the communication effectively. I've, I've met families who still are confused of where, where we're gonna be at. I have teachers who have very valid points when we, when we look to, when we are obviously look to move forward. Could we enhance our Facebook social media presence? Is that something that's possible? Because when I analyze our Facebook, social media posts, it looks like, you know, we do it one day at a time and it'd be really good to, to really increase that. I don't know who's working that platform, but I would love to see that. Not just me, I have constituents who've reached out to ask, that's, that's how they get their source of information. I want to thank Mayor Tom McGee and his staff as well. I know when you guys, when you guys put out your information, I have constituents that access information that way, but if we could kind of centralize that communication, I know that's been brought up in the past a lot, is that something that we could probably improve on for our reopening communications?
Yeah, I mean, I, I guess, I'm just trying to understand the feedback. I mean, I definitely understand and embrace the feedback of, you know, more communication is better. You know, at the same time, I don't want to overwhelm families with, you know, peppering them with things every day. We're really trying to be thoughtful about, you know, the things that families should concern themselves with at this point. And, you know, I mentioned that, the website, and, you know, I know that websites are a little passe in terms of a communication tool, because in this day and age, people are used to things coming to them, not necessarily going to get them. And, and which, which makes Facebook and, you know, Instagram, Twitter effective tools because stuff is coming out that way. But I'll say that at this point, you know, most of the communication has come from the district level. There's been, of course, some school-based information, and a lot of the questions that I've gotten personally from, from families is really like school-based information. And letters are going out to families, is this next week, Kim Powers?
Yep, actually, many, they're going out today and on Monday from all of the, from all of the schools. Yeah, yes.
With, with specifics about, you know, whom to contact, specifics about schedules, which I know is a big question. It is available on the website, we talked about it at the virtual town halls. But, you know, I'm, I'm hearing your feedback about Facebook, we can absolutely ramp that up. The webmaster is largely in, in control of that, but he puts on what we ask him to put on. And then Shannon Bansfield also has a hand in some of the, the content for that. Certainly, we can, we can ramp that up.
Thank you. My next question is around the technology piece. I know that K through 12, as we call the littles, I like the way you point that. I'm so grateful to know that we secured a $1.6 million grant to support the purchase of obviously more devices, but in, in, in the meantime, so what are we gonna do, those folks, you know, to get them orientated? So I feel like outreach is gonna be way, way more important, right? Is that, is that, is there a plan in place to, to ensure that, because those kids who don't have those devices, K through 2, what, what's, what's the plan there? How are we gonna achieve that equity?
Go ahead, Kim.
So what we've tasked the principals with doing is sending out messages to their families, their K to 2 families, to understand which families, which students do not have access to any device. And then they're compiling that data, and what we're going to do is get iPads that exist in the schools to those families, so that, you know, at least they will have something until we can give them a laptop.
And now you're talking Class Dojos, how are we gonna act? So each school, are they gonna utilize their?
Schoology.
Schoology, excuse me, excuse me, I said Class Dojo. So that, that was another, actually, a good point. I have families that are still used to using like Class Dojo, they got orientated to Jupiter and like, they're still, so they're actually nervous to start to do.
And principals are still communicating on those, as our teachers on those platforms still, so that they can then transition families to Schoology.
Now, how are we reaching those populations that don't speak primary English at the home? Because I have those families who really don't, who can't really, you have, you have your, you know, your families, your parents who really rely on the school systems and, you know, in the classroom. How, how do we, how do we reach those parents? Are we providing translators at the Parent Information Center? Like, what, what kind of services are we providing for they, for them to really digest the new Schoology system?
I'll speak to that. So Parent Information Center, there are a number of bilingual staff in that office, and we, I would say that the, the majority of families that come into the Parent Information Center are families for whom English is not their first language. And so we're mindful of that and have shifted staffing down there accordingly. All of the virtual town halls, all of the written communication is available to families, at least in English and Spanish. And then, you know, the reopening document, things of that nature have been pasted in, on the website with the, making it available for the, using the translation widget into, you know, 27 different languages. So we're, we're, we're uber mindful of that, but, you know, you, you, you mentioned outreach. You know, last, actually, Monday of this week, we had a virtual town hall on, on special education, and we had, you know, grand total, about 600 families participate, 200 of which were families for whom their first language is Spanish, and that was facilitated by our assistant administrator of SED and, and Guillermo Sinelli, who you know comes to most of our school committee meetings and will translate for any family that needs it. So we're, we're, we're really, we really want to make this accessible for all families. The outreach is being done in, in multiple languages. You know, we're, we're definitely mindful of that.
Deputy Superintendent Ogierro, I think you have your hand up to speak to that.
Yeah, I just wanted to note that the videos that were released today on our website, that Ashton Dean did, she did with a student, and the student did the identical same video instructions, they would, he was demonstrating how to log into the computer, both in English and in Spanish, and for Schoology, the same thing will happen. There will be demonstrations of how to log in, what the, you know, how you maneuver in Schoology, and that will also be in English and in Spanish.
Deb, I, I just have, one of my concerns is, is those students who have really severe learning disabilities, you know, those students who really, that, that's a real concern, special ed, ESL, those are really students that in particular that I'm really concerned about. I know families that reach out, I even have staff reach out, so as long, I think that the orientation i- is very important, especially the, as long as, like you said, I appreciate the transparency with that, so I just really want to put that out there.
No, we are also very mindful of that, Brian.
Next, Member Capola, then I see Member Gailey has her hand up. Member Capola?
Yes. I'm glad that Brian addressed the special ed, because that's, that's a concern. But the, I, I, just before we got on the meeting, I had two parents right away still looking for the devices. So we're still not reaching everybody. You know, one of them said that she's been calling the school and are the answering machines not hooked up in the schools? And, or if they are, are we returning those calls? Are there, you know, I know the clerks probably are not in that.
We brought them back.
The metres also?
We brought them back two days early. Well, actually, we brought them back seven days early, next week and two days this week. So, you know, it, it strikes me as odd that the, the machine is not working, but I would say that principals have been doing massive outreach on the device pickup, usually through the all-call. They've been in the office, you know, daily, answering calls from families and directing them to, you know, where the, the pickup spaces are. But I, I would say, you know, families should call the help desk also if they, or just have a question about anything related to the device, including pickup. They can, help them in any way that they need.
Okay, now, they are, they are using the all-call, though the principals are using the all-call. Okay, that's good. And the other thing is, on the food provider, I know that we have a new provider or a different food program. So you mentioned that food was good, so maybe Kevin might want to just get into that and explain that?
Kevin?
Yes, yes, can you hear me?
Yes, yeah.
Okay, yes, you know, yes, this year, we, our food provider in the past was a company called Preferred Meals. This year, it actually, the company is Chartwell's, but they teamed up with a company called Revolution Foods, who's technically out of California, but they worked with the Boston Public Schools a couple of years ago and have been doing a lot of work with them. And what they are doing is they are cooking and making meals, nothing is frozen, everything is made within the day or day before and delivered to the schools. And as the superintendent said, they provided us a sample box that we'll be passing out, and it had like spaghetti and meatballs in it, and it had sandwiches, and it had salads, fruit, and it had like breakfast materials. And so these are the foods that are all the elementary schools that will be going with. The secondary schools will still be cooking meals and packaging them up in a similar way, so that would, we try to get away from anything that was previously frozen and would have to be reheated. For example, the spaghetti and meatballs would just have to be put in the oven. The boxes are gonna have directions in Spanish and English, and it would lay out like what the meals would be for day one, the breakfast, this is the breakfast, this is the snack, this is the lunch, and that would be for day one and day two. So we kind of trying to think it out as much as possible, and when the people take the box and they open it, they can go home and their instructions are in both Spanish and English, which will be very helpful for people if they needed to heat anything up.
Thank you, Kevin. That's, that's good on the meals. The other question is, because people have to walk to get these, are the high school students allowed to pick up any of the meals at the elementary?
Oh, yes. All the only, this is considered, the only difference between now and the summer is, in the summer, you can go to any school, that's, that's the nice thing, as long as you know your student ID number, or if the student comes up and says their name, we have to pull them up on the computer just to ensure that they are a Lynn Public Schools student. That's the only difference. But yes, if they live next to an elementary school and they want to go there, that's closer to their house, they can do that.
Right. Great. And I know, Member Gailey, but I'd just like to, because I know there's a lot of people watching, and there's at least 100 people on this Zoom, we're talking about safety in the community, and it's, it's important, you know, we really need to, as a community, come together and follow the guidelines to help limit the spread of COVID in, in the city. And that means, you know, everybody should be wearing masks when they're outside, you know, social distancing, washing your hands if you're sick, you know, you should not, you should be calling your doctor and getting a test, there's four test locations in the city. If you, if you are, if you have been contacted, it's really important to the, to the people getting contact tracing, that you give the appropriate information so we can narrow down where the spread is happening. You know, there's a lot of outdoor gatherings and people are getting together in bigger gatherings without taking safety precautions, which is part of what's happening here. Obviously, we live in a dense community with people having to work in service industry, and we're a different dynamic than a lot of communities. But for us to really take this on, it's important that we continue to do it together and, and continue to follow the guidelines that we've been talking about for months. So it's, this is an opportunity for us to understand that, spread the word. I mean, I know, Brian, you were talking about information, we need to spread that information out, we need to, as a community, come together and really be diligent about what we're doing and, and ensuring that we're safe. And when we're out and about, we wear masks and we, we make sure that we're not in, not in large gatherings and gathering with people that could be asymptomatic and seem perfectly healthy, but are spreading this disease in our community. So we need to, as a community, come together and address this together. That's how we were able to limit the spread through four or five weeks over the month of July. Obviously, the summer's been hard and people have been letting their guard down, but the impact is across the board and we're seeing the impact, obviously, with the remote learning, how it impacts our community. It's incumbent on all of us to really work together and, and, you know, really be an example for other communities and, and, and be an example for our friends and neighbors and family to really take this on head-on together. So I just want to make that, the message is still the same, and the more and more data coming in reflects that face coverings absolutely make a big, big difference for those that, for both. for those that uh uh for both you wearing it yourself and people that you're you're coming in contact with. So I just wanted to make that, um, you know, make those comments and 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 we'll continue to do that. I've been trying to do that uh across the board on a lot of different media, um, L L C T V and Facebook. And again, sharing all that information um with all of us here tonight. Um, let's do it together. Let's let's bring that, let's bring that spread down in the city and 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 uh get in a better place together. So I know Member Gailey, you had a question?
I I just wanted to. I just wanted to um address Brian's questions about languages and ask Deb. Um, I know that in programs that I have taken, um, Google tools, that I could translate any language, not just Spanish, but if I needed to translate any language whatsoever, I could copy the page, translate it to Camer, translate it to any language, Brian, at all. This is the beauty of it. Am I right, Deb?
Well, so on school, the for the parents, there's the ability, there's a drop down that they can choose what language they want the text to be in, uh and they will be able to see it in the language they choose.
Thank you.
Number Sadoway.
Thank you. I just had a couple of follow-up questions. Um, Patrick, can you let me know what we're doing or what this uh what's happening with the out-of-district students um or those in day placements?
Special education?
Yep.
Um, those placements, I mean, I've, this is the time of the year. Uh, I've come to know that uh the number of contracts coming through for uh between the Lynn Public Schools and those um out-of-district placements, uh, you know, that 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 number is high. Um, I we've been, we've been fulfilling and and uh adhering to uh those existing agreements. Um, so any student who, you know, had in in his or her plan um an outplacement, whether it's at North Shore Consortium or somewhere else, um, that, nothing has changed related to that.
Okay, and what are we doing with the local businesses that provided bagels and smoothies? Are they still um do, okay, so they're still involved with the school?
So uh One Mighty Mill uh is still part of our uh food service plan. Kevin, I don't know if you want to offer the details on that, but.
I, yes, we we still, uh, even though we switched vendors, we we ensured that we kept our local uh uh vendors. Actually, we expanded to Domino's as well as firing some of the pizza that that we'll be serving on our, you know, when we do, if hopefully when the students are coming back on a regular basis, they'll be having pizza. And that's part of the other local vendor that has jumped on board. So Mo- One Mighty Mill has continued, uh, that's expanded throughout the program. He was excited, you know, as you recall, he started with the high schools and then did the middle schools. So now it's gonna be universal even to down to the elementary schools this year. So he's been really excited to work with us, we're happy to work with him too.
And uh which buildings do we use for the summer lunches? How many people were allowed inside and were there any health issue incidents?
I don't believe that.
Go ahead, go ahead, you start, go ahead.
I don't believe there were any incidents at all to my knowledge as far as that. Uh, I don't have the exact numbers in front of me, but uh the four buildings was uh were Lynn Classical High School, Lynn English High School, Marshall Middle School, and the Lynn Vocational High School, the main building. So those are the four sites.
And what were the uh uh rules with regards to how many uh people could come in at a time?
The the uh the meals were being pretty much fed at a doorway. We had like a grabbing go. So we would have, we had signs there that said you had to maintain six feet so people could just come in, you know, one at a time, grab the meals. They went in like typically try, we have a set of double doors, you come in on the right, swing to the left, get your meals and go out the door on your right, and the next person would come in.
Okay, and yeah, Patrick, I I, you know, as a special education attorney, I feel uh for the parents, um, of the students that are on IEPs and 504s, because the progress is measured and celebrated. And that pushes a student to continue uh with their with their growth and and their goals. So I think that the remote part of it, it's gonna be difficult to to have that um that 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 connection, that bond and uh that they need with the with the the teacher. Um, so yeah, I I I really hope that our community um is aware that 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 our behavior impacts some of our most vulnerable students. So when we're in the red, um, you know, it's impacting your, our entire education system. Public education system is impacted by the behavior of people that, you know, that may or may not even go to our schools. So it's 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 crazy. But I I just, I know that everything is delayed and many entities, you know, they're they're spread thin because they could be on a skeleton crew or whatever. But I just, what what bothers me is that we have to wait until the end of September, Patrick, for this report that I think is vital, because even without DESI, I think the committee, we still would have wanted this information to make any type of determination as to the safety of our of our of our building once we knew um what was expected from the CDC and and whatnot. So um i- if we can push them um and and try to get this information, you know, quicker, you know, it's it's been some time, that'd be great. I I just think that um this is information that we we should should have some component to how what we rely on when we make decisions uh with regards to who we're sending into these buildings.
We noted.
Thank you.
Member Nicholson.
Thank you. I just want to make a quick follow-up point about the about the meals. Thank you for that update, Kevin. That sounds really promising about the additional fresh meals. Um, and uh I know this was some interesting things that Boswell was close to doing on that. And and that's terrific and that's coming along. Just a a quick point on the vendors, you you know, that's I I'm that's exciting that we're continuing the partnerships with local businesses. To the extent that we're adding vendors, I just, you know, would would request that we try to use local vendors when we can, when that makes sense. There's a lot of benefit, I think, for supporting the community that ultimately benefits the students and and in showing them opportunities uh about what's happening in their communities, supporting their community, um, offers potential for jobs and such, and future learning experiences. So uh if we, a- as we are adding vendors, uh I think we should keep that top of mind.
Great. Um, with that, uh, um, we're on to the next item of business, uh, a request for executive session. Is there a motion?
Make a motion to go into executive session to discuss strategies with respect to collective bargaining rela- relative to the Lynn Teachers Union Local ten thirty seven and the Administrators Association Conference.
Motion's been made, is there a second? A second requires a roll call.
Mr. Castellanos?
Yes.
Ms. Capola? Ms. Capola?
I'm sorry, sorry, yes.
Mr. Ford?
Yes.
Ms. Gailey?
Yes.
Mr. Nicholson?
Yes.
Mr. Sadoway?
Yes.
I'm a B.
Yes.
Okay, with that, we will, with Dr. Tuttwiler's um um guidance, we will go into executive session. Back into regular session.
Motion to return to regular session.
Second.
Uh, motion, the second, uh, roll call, Akryon.
Nan, you have to unmute. Nan? Maybe Mary can do it, because I don't think Nan.
Uh, Mary, would you take the roll call?
Yeah, I'd be happy to. Mr. Castellanos?
Yes.
Ms. Capola? Yes. Mr. Ford?
Yes.
Ms. Gailey?
Yes.
Mr. Nicholson?
Yes.
Mr. Sadoway?
Yes.
Mayor McGee?
Yes.
So the um, there is um business from the executive session. Do you want to like to uh present a motion related to that action?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Member Sadoway?
I'd like uh uh to make a motion uh to approve the actions that took place in our executive session uh relative uh to the uh contracts with the uh Lynn Teachers Union and uh the um LSAA, where we um agreed to continue negotiating um uh cer- certain parts of the contract and uh given the authority to um uh the superintendent and attorney my host to continue those negotiations, as well as uh given attorney my hosting, um, Patrick Superintendent, uh, the authority to um, uh, move forward with the the uh information that we agreed to at the last meeting with the memorandum of agreement with regards to the professional development days that are coming up, which uh would be optional.
So motion on the table?
Second.
Requires a roll call. Uh, Mary, uh, I don't know if Nan is uh is back yet, so we'll make sure.
Do you want me to do it?
Yeah, so we'll 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 make sure, it seems like she wasn't able to get back on.
Mr. Mayor, do you want me to do the roll call?
Yes, please, uh, yes, please.
Mr. Castellanos?
Yes.
Ms. Capola? Yes. Mr. Ford? Mr. Ford?
Yeah, oh, yes.
Ms. Gailey?
Yes.
Mr. Nicholson?
Yes.
Mr. Sadoway?
Yes.
Mayor McGee?
Yes.
Uh, the last piece on the agenda tonight is um communications, Superintendent Tuttwiler? I'm, you're on mute.
Nice conversation with myself. Uh, I have prepared uh a superintendent's report specifically um uh targeting uh information related to the um the resolution uh that the school committee adopted on June eleventh, uh wherein there were two specific uh requests. Um, one involved the development of uh inclusivity panels at the secondary schools to address um, you know, issues around race inequity at that level. And then also a district-wide uh professional development designed to uh support uh the district's effort to confront uh racism where it exists and also elevate cultural competence. Um, rather than um share about that, I'd prefer to do a presentation uh for the school committee uh at our next meeting, which will be soon, uh, probably next week. Um, uh, but I will post the report uh immediately for for folks to read.
Okay, that sounds like uh a a good proposal, a member Sadoway, would you like to speak to that?
Uh, I was just gonna make a motion to adjourn.
Okay, so I think we're we're happy to have that at the next meet meeting, Dr. Tuttwiler. Uh, and and Member Sadoway has made a motion to adjourn, is there a second?
Second.
Uh, Mary, would you mind doing the roll call uh as well, please?
Yes, Mr. Castellanos?
Yes.
Ms. Capola?
Yes.
Mr. Ford?
Yes.
Ms. Gailey?
Yes.
Mr. Nicholson?
Yes.
Mr. Sadoway?
Yes.
Mayor McGee?
Yes.
Everyone have a great night. Thank you for everything.
Take care, Michael.
Thank you. We'll talk.
Take care, Mike.
Good night, all.